Do you want to promote your business? Do you want to talk about your nonprofit organization? Do you want to talk about your culture? Introducing the online web TV, AFRIC TODAY. You can watch us live at the same time on four platforms, Facebook, YouTube, Twitter, and using the AFRIC TODAY app. Download our app today for Android or Apple. Promote your business today. For more information, go to www.africtoday.com. AFRIC TODAY, the best of digital TV.
Hi. Hi. Good to see you all. Yeah, everyone. See you there. Hi. Hello.
Do you want to promote your business? Do you want to talk about your nonprofit organization? Do you want to talk about your culture? Introducing the online web TV, AFRIC TODAY. You can watch us live at the same time on four platforms, Facebook, YouTube, Twitter, and using the AFRIC TODAY app. Download our app today for Android or Apple. Promote your business today. For more information, go to www.africtoday.com. AFRIC TODAY, the best of digital TV.
This is Vivian. She recently started a catering business, but like many other small businesses, she was struggling to get new clients. Growing a new business is never easy. She advertised her business on iWing Marketplace to increase her visibility and to attract more customers. Advertise your business like Vivian to attract potential customers no matter where you are in the world. It takes just seconds for customers to find you through the search engine or the category section. So don't wait. Advertise your business today on www.iwingmarketplace.com and increase your chances of being found by potential customers.
Good evening and thank you for joining us for this virtual town hall meeting organized by the Elite Development Youth Academy and hosted by AFRIC TODAY. My name is Mursay Salu and I'll be your host for the evening. This evening, we'll be discussing a wide range of topics from health to food distribution to benefits, the census, and upcoming elections. We're also joined by a great group of panelists that will give us an insight on what's being done on the county and state levels. Before we get started, let me introduce our panelists for the evening. We have Delegate Janelle Wilkens, representing District 20. We have Jackie DeCarlo, Chief Executive Officer at the Mana Food Center. Harriet Shangari, Chair of the Montgomery County Committee of African Affairs. And I believe we're also going to be joined by council members, so Councilmember Gabe Albernaz and Councilmember Tom Hucker at some point. Thank you all for being with us.
Thank you.
So some, okay, there's Councilmember Tom Hucker. Thank you for joining us. So some housekeeping. This town hall is about two hours long. And since we have a lot of grounds to cover this evening, we're going to get started right away. Everyone will have two minutes to give opening remarks. And then Councilmember Tom Hucker will have a short presentation to give us an update on the current state of COVID-19 from an economic perspective. And then we will dive into the questions. Councilmember Tom Hucker, I will start with you with your opening remarks.
Thank you, Mursay. Thanks for everybody for being here. I know everybody has a lot going on. It's great to see a lot of friends like Harriet and Delegate Wilkins and Jackie. And I can't see everybody else. But thank you so much for joining us tonight and for putting this together. So I represent District 5 on the Montgomery County Council. I currently serve as the Vice President. I live in Silver Spring and represent the east side of Montgomery County in particular that obviously has many, many African immigrants from every area in the diaspora. One, over 2 million people, I think you all know, have been infected with COVID around the world. It's hard to believe that it's been two months since Governor Hogan announced the first cases in Maryland on March 5th. And during that timeframe, our lives have been completely changed. I know my colleague, Councilmember Albernaz, is going to be on soon. He chairs the HHS Committee. And I'll allow him to speak to the health impacts and the health response as well. But this has completely changed our economy. Just a few statistics. Last week, we had 2.4 million new unemployment claims nationally. So over 36 million Americans are now unemployed. University of Maryland estimates 35% of Marylanders are currently working from home, which is a complete change to our economy. And the chart, which I believe you're going to see in a minute, shows three possible economic recovery scenarios that were modeled by Oxford University. And all three show dramatically reduced economic activity under any scenario and prolonged unemployment like we haven't ever seen since the Great Depression. Do we have the slides? Dave or anybody else?
We should have this.
Maybe not. I do want you to know that the county government has been working nonstop to address the issue. Obviously, none of us saw this coming. This is a really busy time for us anyway because this is the time we deal with the operating budget for Montgomery County. And every two years, we deal with the capital budget as well. So we have statutory deadlines in law to pass both of those budgets. And we finalized both of the budgets today, this afternoon. We've been meeting online for the last two months, pretty much every day, to address issues around coronavirus. And we passed a relief package that's nearly $50 million in support for our small businesses, in emergency food relief, in millions of dollars for our hospitals to help them address the surge in patients. And tremendous amount of money. Jackie DeCarlo is going to talk later about food relief, I know. But working with many of our nonprofit partners to make sure that our families that are the most in need have what they need in this very difficult time. Can we see the slides or not?
Yes, we can see them.
Okay, everybody's seeing them. Okay, great. So in addition to the health response that I know Gabe's going to talk about, we're working to support our vulnerable residents. The crisis has been impacting how residents access just the basics. So many of our families in Montgomery County, unfortunately, especially families facing food insecurity, count on our school system to provide some of their meals every day, but our schools are closed. So we've passed, we've put in millions of dollars for emergency food relief. We have spent $2 million on rental subsidies to prevent evictions. We've passed a historic rent relief bill to freeze rent increases and extend those that freeze for six months after the crisis ends. And we've secured $750,000 for food security, including culturally appropriate and locally sourced food, which includes some grants for ethnic groceries in Montgomery County as well, and a long-term plan to source more food in our region so we're less dependent on bringing in food from the outside. We're also doing everything we can to support our small businesses. We're giving out $25 million in small business grants. We have been giving small business grants, grants to support teleworking as well, to help both employees and employers invest in the software they need and the training to help their employees work from home. And I've been heavily involved in a lot of individual issues as well, helping our businesses with licensing issues, with permitting, and many other issues that have come up through this unexpected crisis. That's not everything we're doing over the last two months, but those are many of the major issues. It's also reshaped our budget completely. The county council finished, as I mentioned, the operating budget and the capital budget today. And for the first time, we adopted what's called a continuity of services budget, first time in 10 years or so since the last Great Recession, just trying to maintain critical government services at the level that we spent last year since we don't know really what the future holds and how long this crisis will continue. If you live in Montgomery County, you want to learn more about the details of the budget, you should visit montgomerycountymd.gov/council. There are many resources there about every issue that you care about. And I'm spending a lot of time communicating with constituents about the budget and how we're dealing with the COVID crisis as well. Many resources are at tomhucker.com/coronavirus. We hold a town hall every Monday night. Last Monday, we had one with Congressman Jamie Raskin. The Monday before that, with Senator Chris Van Hollen. And the Monday before that, with Congressman John Sarbanes. Those are all recorded and they're all at that page, tomhucker.com/coronavirus. So you can get a lot of information there about what both the, not just the county government, but what the federal government is doing and the state government as well to address the coronavirus crisis. And finally, if we're at Slide 6, we're at the recovery phase in health. We're starting to address the economic crisis while we're trying to do everything we can without backsliding on our health indicators. Our county and our state governments are being squeezed in every direction. We're losing revenues. And at the same time, we have increasing demands on our human services. Our economic recovery is really going to hinge on whether we can do everything we can to reopen without jeopardizing our health. If we can come out of the stay-at-home status without increases in our cases and our hospitalizations and our deaths, that would be great. But we reopen too quickly and we see those increases and we have to scale back the restrictions, increase the restrictions again. That's going to be really devastating to our economy. So that's what we're really trying to avoid, as inconvenient as it is for all of us. And I know it's really devastating for many of our small businesses to have the economy closed like this. Really, the most important thing is our public health. So we're reopening, following the guidance of our health officer and following our local public health data in Montgomery County. And we're going to be doing it in stages based on the advice that we get from our top doctors. And so I think that's pretty much it at this stage. And I'll turn it back to Mursay and then see what questions there are for the end. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Hucker, for that informative briefing. I'm going to turn it over to Jackie now. Food insecurity has become like an even bigger issue since this pandemic hit. And Mana Food has always done a great job in making sure everybody has food security. What strategies are being implemented to make sure that all neighborhoods have access to food, the need of food they have? All the immigrant communities, just all the neighborhoods in general?
Thank you, Mursay, for this opportunity. It's great to be part of this call and this conversation. I just want to, you said some kind words about Mana Food Center, but I did want to just underscore that one of the things that, as its representative, I'd love to say is that Mana Food Center looks like Montgomery County. We're as beautiful as Montgomery County. So in the background, all of those photos are of my colleagues, colleagues from Asia, colleagues from Latin America, and one from Uganda and one from Liberia. And so we are very committed to a diverse culture because we ourselves believe in diversity, believe in taking care of our neighbors. And we have been honored to, for the almost 40 years, serve the community. This crisis has just really redoubled our efforts to be as collaborative as possible. So we are part of what is called the COVID Food Security Task Force. And that is a gathering of leaders from offices of emergency management, faith groups, government agencies, nonprofits like Mana. And we're really using data to make sure that as many neighborhoods that can be targeted who need our food and the food of other food assistance agencies receive it. So for instance, we have a market at Tech Road in Silver Spring, which is open two days a week. We've changed our hours there. We have increased our hours at a location in Glenmont. We are all told at 18 different locations every single week. And then we're also partnering with Montgomery County Public Schools. As Mr. Hucker mentioned, we've been given some resources to make sure that neighborhoods of high need on Friday is those families that may be receiving meals from MCPS also have food on the weekend. So what I want people to understand is that those locations are open to the public and they're what folks are calling grab and go, where a family, depending on its household size, can walk up to the school site and receive one or two bags, depending on its household size. But we also, and what allows for people not to have to stand in long lines, not to worry about us running out of food, is that we schedule appointments in these locations all over the county. So again, in this area, we're at Tech Road in Silver, Tech Road and 29, we're at Colesville Presbyterian Church. We're at the Glenmont United Methodist, Silver Spring United Methodist. And if you call our number, 301-424-1130, one day ahead, then we can schedule you for one of the different locations. We will not be asking for documentation around legal status. We will not be sharing the information. So it's a very welcoming environment. And it's all gathered, as you asked, to make sure that we're in the neighborhoods where folks most need us and they can receive a reliable, healthy, culturally appropriate, and hopefully appealing source of food. And we do this as we celebrate the fact that the community is making this possible. We really don't want, even though this is a big challenge, and as Mr. Hucker said, it's going to last for a long time, I really want to reassure people that the community is responding and that we don't need to panic or worry because we do have plans in place for the long term. This task force has taken a long view. We know that once we defeat the pandemic, we still have to get our economy back. I want to thank our elected officials for doing so much to put their resources and to assure you that groups like Mana, particularly Mana, are here to serve for the long haul so that we can always, we can recover together and we will have food for all.
Thank you for that, Jackie. Speaking of access, I'm going to turn it over to Harriet. What strategies are being put in place to refer the African community, immigrant community, to these different resources? Whether it's food, whether it's rental assistance, whether it's business? What is being done to make sure they have the information they need?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Jackie and Tom, for elaborating so well what you're doing for our communities out here. So I'm the African Community liaison and my job directly works with African immigrant communities here in the county. The strategies that we've put in place is to work through our partners to make sure that we are able to address each and every community. So work with faith-based organizations, nonprofit organizations, community-based organizations that are already on the ground and have established relationships with the people in the community. Then we make sure that when we share that information, they disseminate it to their respective community members. Also, we have relationships that we build. Sometimes we take individual cases. We make sure that the information that is shared is going to be utilized and people are able to really access the resources. So in the past, like two months, I've been sitting in with different ethnic groups. I'm sitting there meeting to identify some of the gaps and challenges that they do have in accessing these resources and be able to address those challenges. Sometimes it could be language barriers. Sometimes maybe it's access to technology. Sometimes they just need transportation. So we make sure that we, once we find out what are the gaps or what are the barriers to accessing that resource, we are able to provide intervention and we are staying connected so that we can make sure that this community are safe. Because food insecurity has been a major issue. There's a lot of families with loss of income. So we are staying very connected and Mana has been saving us well. So thank you.
Thank you for that, Harriet. I'm now going to turn it over to Delegate Wilkins. If you can give me your opening remarks to begin with, and then we'll go into the question.
Sure, absolutely. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me on. And thank you to everyone that is tuned in. I'm just sending well wishes for health and safety to all of you and all of your families. I am Delegate Janelle Wilkins. I represent District 20 in the Maryland House of Delegates. That's the Silver Spring, Tacoma Park, and White Oak areas. And I have been in office for about four years now. I was born in Kingston, Jamaica, and my family migrated to the United States when I was young. And now I live in beautiful Silver Spring and that's where I am quarantining. So stay home, stay safe. I also want to share that I'm the Parliamentarian of the House of Delegates, some responsible for ensuring the effective and orderly business of the House. I serve on the Ways and Means Committee. So that is the committee that deals with issues around education, elections, taxes, and gambling. We're currently out of session in the Maryland General Assembly. So what that means is that we're not able to introduce bills, debate bills currently, and that the governor has a lot of the power right now because we are in a state of emergency. So in this crisis, many of us legislators, like myself, have been advocating and leading on different issues. I focused in on ensuring that people can keep their homes because of the tough financial times, whether you're a renter or a homeowner, making sure that we are putting on our safety net in place for people to keep the roof over their heads. I focused in on strategies to make sure that the disparate impact of the COVID-19 crisis, the Black and Brown communities that we're seeing most impacted, that we are addressing that, and also focusing in on the 2020 census and the really important census that's taking place and that we all need to respond to. So the last thing that I'll say in terms of introduction is that this crisis has really exposed our country, exposed our world in terms of the inequalities that we already knew existed. And it's critical that we come together, think big, and think ahead to make sure that we never go back to these inequalities that we've seen exposed. So thank you again for having me.
Thank you, Delegate Wilkins. You mentioned census and that's, you know, it's something people have to get counted for. It's very important. Our community depends on it. Can you tell us a little bit about, like historically, the Census Office has left certain communities out in the past, you know, communities of color or immigrant communities, non-English speaking communities, young children, all of that? And what is being done to make sure that doesn't happen this time around? And are specific neighborhoods being targeted? Like the hard-to-count type of communities? And what is being done for that?
Sure, absolutely. So first of all, I think it's, I know we have a lot going on in this country right now. We're in the middle of a crisis. We all have a presidential election. But there's also something very important taking place, which is a count of every single person in the United States. And this is important because the census is really about money and power. It's about resources and dollars and them being allocated. And the way that these funds are allocated is based on the count, the census count. How many people do we have in Maryland? How many people do we have in our neighborhood, our community? So the state of Maryland, for example, we get about $16 billion a year from the federal government that's based on our census count. So imagine when someone is missing and it comes to allocating those funds, we end up missing out on much-needed resources, such as some of the work that Jackie does with Mana. The census is also critical for all communities, and I'm getting to the undercount as well, because it's also about your political power. We will go back and we will draw the district lines that will present to you in Congress, who represents you in the State House, and so on and so forth, based on that count. So when we go to draw those lines, I want to see everyone. I want to see who you are, where you are, and make sure that we have fair lines and that when we draw our districts, that we really make sure that our political power is really sustained. But unfortunately, certain communities are undercounted. Young children, children under five in particular, communities of color, immigrants, non-English speakers, renters are often undercounted. And I use the word "undercount" instead of "hard-to-count" because they're undercounted in the census because we have not used the right strategies to reach and motivate them. And that's up to all of us to understand and know the information around why the census is important and talk to our family and friends to make sure that they respond. So just to give you a sense, right now in the United States, the response rate is about 59.8%. In Maryland, the response rate is 63.9%. So we're doing better than the country as a whole. And in Montgomery County, we have an even higher rate of up to 66% right now in the 2020 census. However, we want to get to 100%. We want everyone to be counted. So the main thing to keep in mind when it comes to reaching diverse communities and historically undercounted communities is trusted messengers, right? I'm a good messenger for certain communities, but there are communities where I might not be the best messenger. And every single person that's on this line, there are people who really trust us when we convey information to them. So what the state has done is helped to put some resources in the hands of some trusted messenger and some local community partners and organizations to help get the word out and lead various activities. This was before COVID-19. So there were events that were planned that of course had to be canceled and that have gone online. But now But now we're regrouping and we're figuring out where are people? They're online right now, a lot more than they were before. People are connecting through places like this, like the forums that we're having now. They're at the grocery stores trying to stock up. And so now what we're doing is trying to just get in front of people wherever they are. And we're doing food distribution, having a flyer in there about the census. So it's all, we're all in this together and we all have our part to play in terms of getting out the count. Thank you for that question.
Yeah, thank you for your answer. And still on like the census topic, some, there are different barriers that keep folks from actually filling out the census and there's a variety of them. But the main ones, at least within the African community, is concern for data and privacy and distrust in the government. And that's usually related to immigration, specifically those who have pending statuses or are undocumented. Can you speak a little bit about that? Will the sense, filling out the census affect them in any way?
Thank, this is another great question. And there is definitely historical reasons why communities, especially communities of color, would distrust the government. But when it comes to the 2020 census, it's important to know that your data is safe and secure and is protected by federal law. This is the laws that surround the census and the privacy of your information is one of the strongest laws that we have on the books. It's called Title 13. And a census employee is required to take an oath where they get a fine and would go to jail if they were to expose any of your information. You can take the census online or over the phone, or you can mail in your response. So what that means is that you're filling out your response on your own. You're not sharing it with your landlord. You're not sharing with anyone else. You can go on your computer to my2020census.gov and respond right there. And your data cannot be shared with anyone. It is kept confidential. So that's something that's very important to keep in mind. And there's no question on citizenship. So when you fill out your census, the government and no one is going to know, you know, your status in terms of, you know, do you have a green card? Or do you have documents? Do you not? That is not a question on the census. We want to know about how many people you have in your household. We want to know questions like race and ethnicity so that we can do some planning. So we really have to ensure that our communities know that their data is protected by the federal government, that it is private.
Okay. Thank you, Delegate Wilkins, for that answer. I'm now going to turn it over to, back to Harriet. Due to COVID-19, like every other community, the African community has been hit hard with unemployment. And a lot of those might be undocumented or they might not have work permits or social security numbers. And how would those people and those statuses be able to access benefits from the government? Like, how are they going to survive if they lost their jobs and they can't do anything?
Thank you for that good question. So basically, recently, there have been a resource that was put, a grant that was put by the county. However, at this point, I am not able to discuss that grant as we stand. I think you have the information that the county was sued. And I'm aware that there are many options that they do have as far as resources. So make sure that I connect them to resources that are already available in the community. Also, HHS has been working very closely with a system that provide all the safety programs to ensure that immigrant communities, that those who are not traditionally able to access services that are already available in the county, whether it's nationwide, maybe did not qualify for stimulus check that came, or maybe did not qualify for other grants that are put in place because of the nationality or lack of documentation, will be able to access some services. But this particular one, I'm not able to speak to as we stand. Thank you.
Okay. Is Councilmember Hucker still with us?
He'll be back soon.
Okay.
We just stepped away, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Delegate Wilkins, can you speak about upcoming elections and what people should know, like the importance of voting and making their voices count? About the outcome?
Absolutely. Very exciting times in terms of our election that is coming up. In Maryland, we have moved our election back to June 2nd and we have moved it primarily to vote by mail. But what that means is that everyone will get a ballot in the mail if you haven't already. If you are a registered voter in Maryland, it will be mailed to you. So you don't have to request it. It will be mailed to you proactively. However, when you fill out your ballot, it has to be returned. It has to be postmarked by June 2nd. Very, very important. So make sure you send it in early because we do not want to be up against the clock. Your ballot will not count if it is not postmarked by June 2nd. So other things to keep in mind, of course, we're going to have the election for president. There are judges that we will be voting on our Board of Elections race. We have a congressional race that's also on the ballot. So very important issues. And we can see right now with what's happening in our country, how important it is to elect people who you will trust in a crisis, to elect people who you trust to lead. So that's why we have to make sure that we vote. For vote by mail, this is the first time in Maryland that we have done just statewide vote by mail. So it's new for a lot of people. So when you do get your ballot, you want to make sure you use black ink specifically. You want to make sure you look at how many people per race you're supposed to be voting for so that you can fill in the right amount of people. And then finally, another very, very important thing about the election is to make sure that you sign the return envelope. Your postage will be paid. You don't have to get a stamp or anything. But when you mail your ballot back in, on that return envelope, there'll be a place there for you to sign. So you have to make sure that you sign that back of your envelope to make sure that your vote counts as well. So those are the critical things. I'll just reiterate that again. June 2nd, postmark. Make sure you mail it back by then, postmarked by then. And use black ink and sign your signature on the return envelope. But we have some really important races and hope to have a really great response in terms of our voting rate.
Yeah. For folks that can't vote from home, for, you know, whatever reason, whether it's language barrier or any other issues, there is the option of voting in person, correct? In some locations, if I'm mistaken?
Yes. Thank you. That's important to mention. So we want to make sure we have as many options as possible because there are certain communities who it would just be a challenge for them to respond by mail. Another option that you have is that we have several voting locations. So I only know the one that's in my area, but they are online and maybe there's a way for us to send that out and share a link where if you must go in person, you can vote in person at that location. So for my area, it's the Silver Springs Civic Center. That's the closest, but there may, there are others that are around the county that might be closer for you, depending on where you live. There are also drop boxes. So if you would like to drop your ballot off, once you get it in the mail and if you prefer to drop it off, there are also Dropbox locations located at these voting locations as well. So for me, I know that I just prefer to go and drop my ballot off. What I'll do is go to the Silver Springs Civic Center. There's a marked, very obvious Dropbox there, right outside the Civic Center. And I'll just drop my ballot off right in there. So you do have those options. We just ask that when it comes to voting in person, that you only vote in person if you absolutely need to because we want to be safe, we want to be healthy. We want to limit the amount of in-person voting that takes place. However, we do understand that certain people in certain communities do need that option. But please only exercise it so that we can keep our election officials and others safe. Please only exercise that if you absolutely need to.
Okay. Thank you for that. And since May is Mental Awareness Month, I'm going to direct another question to you, Harriet. I know you're a huge mental health advocate. What, what, what are you doing now during this time, during this pandemic, which, you know, can be a source of depression, anxiety and a lot of stress? What is being done to reach out to the African community where there's like, you know, really big stigma and people don't really talk about their feelings? Is there something that's being done or resource available for them?
Oh, yes, significantly. So lately, we've been highlighting the mental health. It's the health, Mental Health Month by sharing resources that are already available, but also try to identify resources that are culturally competent or culturally sensitive and send them to a specific community. What we are seeing now is rough for everybody. We also try to make sure that we, among ourselves, we highlight that whenever we have a meeting, whenever we have a discussion. And also, we are seeing significant increase in domestic violence here in the county. So we have been encouraging communities to speak or text a friend. You do not have to feel like you have to come out and speak to a stranger. But whoever has a resource, they can share with you and be able to communicate and get you the help you need. The kinds of help that are available, you can speak to someone online. You can even test at the comfort of your home. But we want to make sure that you're safe and you know that resources are out here. So this is also part of the meetings that we're going to be holding in future to address that. I also wanted to add, for anyone who is not documented and do not qualify for any grants that are out here or any support that is offered by the state or federal or county government, they can call 311. As long as you live in Montgomery County, please call 311 for more information and they can be able to help you.
Okay. Thank you for that. And for 311, for, are there different languages that, you know, that can get resourced in different languages?
Yes, definitely. They can actually even refer to the Gilchrist Center where you can speak to someone in different languages, be able to connect you to the services that you're looking for, including some of the grants that have been put in place. Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I guess we'll leave for Councilmember Hucker.
Unfortunately, I'll be leaving you soon. I will be joining another meeting and thank you for having me. Thank you all. It's been quite an experience learning and thanks for sharing.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us, Harriet.
Thank you.
Hi, Harry.
Hi.
Jackie, is there something that I haven't covered, like with regards to food distribution that you would like to add with my question?
Well, I, I think I just want to underscore that we are all trying to work together, particularly with the concerns about status. So we spoke earlier about trusted messengers, trusted organizations. So one of the things that Mana has done is we've joined forces with groups like Coach Fosa, a group that invited us tonight, Identity Impact. And what we're doing is, is we are trying to help infuse some money by paying stipends to promotoras or community organizers, however you want to phrase it, where people will just be giving outreach and saying, hey, Mana Foods Center, these are the, this is the phone number. You can call. And if you have transportation issues, they have free Lyft rides. If you, as Delegate Wilkins is emphasizing, if you really need to stay home, especially if you're senior or you have a compromised condition, we can do delivery. And so coming from me, that might not be a really compelling message. You might not trust, who's this Mana? Or, you know, read a flyer, even though we are trying to do those in different languages. So we're partnering with organizations that can do outreach on our behalf and kind of be a matchmaker and connect people. And we're really hoping that that gives those stipends, helps the community-based organizations that Harriet mentioned, as well as it gives people a sense of, okay, this is something I can have confidence in. And then I'll just add, we all also are trying to disseminate information about the census. We recently gave out flyers from the League of Women Voters, which is an organization that profiles candidates. We've spoken a little bit about emotional health. And so in our boxes, we have, in our bags, we have the crisis hotline. So if people are in distress and they need somebody to talk to. So we're sharing food, of course, that's critical. But we're also trying to make community connections and we're trying to share as many resources as possible. And we take suggestions. If there are other types of information that needs to be shared, we can certainly try to get that information out because we have been serving about, we've been handing out about 6,000 bags every Friday. And I believe in April, we reached about 4,000 people with our food boxes. So we really are able to get out into the community.
Okay, thank you. And if people are interested in volunteering for Mana, where can they go to do that, to register or to express their interest?
So we have a special page. First, go to manafood.org/COVIDresponse. And there you get information about, like, sometimes people want to organize food drives for us. And so our most wanted food list, which is not only healthy, but also matches a lot of cultural preferences. If you want to volunteer, right now, the slots that we most need are drivers for those food deliveries. But even if we can't put you in a slot right now, we're keeping a database and we will certainly touch base over the next weeks and months as we need volunteers. So manafood.org/COVIDresponse.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to be calling in or inviting in Coach Fofo, who is the founder of Elite Development Youth Academy. And he's been extremely involved in this food distribution, you know, every side. Every Saturday, he's working really hard to make sure, you know, all the communities are well-fed and all. So he will be joining us to say a few words to close out the meeting.
Are we waiting for Coach to get on?
Yeah, I think he's having technical issues.
While we're, while we're waiting, I can just add that there's been a lot of advocacy around housing, as I mentioned. I think there's some important information for residents to know. Right now, in Maryland, there is a ban on evictions and there's a ban on foreclosures. So while the state of emergency, only while the state of emergency is in place, which it is right now, you cannot be put out of your home. However, it's important to make your voice known to call on the governor, call on your local elected officials for further protections because if you've fallen behind and you haven't been able to pay all of your rent, we have June coming up and there are going to be a lot of residents who are in financial difficulty for several months now and who are just not going to be able to pay their rent in full. We want to make sure that protections and policies and executive action is put in place so that we can have long-term payment plans, that we extend the ban on evictions and foreclosures, that there's a, we want a statewide housing relief fund, for example, where we would put a fund together that residents who need help can apply to and get some resources to help pay down any of their housing debt. Those are some of the things that we're calling for. But we also need impacted residents to speak up, share their stories and talk to their state and local elected officials as well so we can create momentum around further action for housing relief because we know that a lot of people are really challenged in terms of covering the cost of their housing right now.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. That's useful information. Okay. I think Coach Fofo is now connecting.
...of their housing right now.
Yeah.
And that's useful information.
Hey, Coach Fofo.
Hello.
Coach Fofo is now connecting.
Okay. Welcome. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for, you know, just want to be having Elite Soccer Development Academy to welcome and also thank you, everyone, to take a time this evening to address the issue. Thank you.
Fofo is now connecting.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Yes, we have Elite Soccer Development Academy to welcome and also thank you, everyone, to take a time this evening to address the issue. Thank you.
Fofo is now connecting.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Do you want to promote your business? Do you want to talk about your nonprofit organization? Do you want to talk about your culture? Introducing the online web TV, Afrikt Today. You can watch us live at the same time on four platforms, Facebook, YouTube, Twitter, and using the Afrikt Today app. Download our app today for Android or Apple. Promote your business today. For more information, go to www.afriktoday.com. Afrikt Today, the best of digital TV.
This is Vivian. She recently started a catering business, but like many other small businesses, she was struggling.
Hello.
This is Vivian. She recently started a catering business, but like many other.
Hello.
We can see you and hear you.
You can see me?
Yes.
Can you see me now?
Yes.
Can you speak?
Hello.
Yes, we can see, we can hear you and see you.
You can hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, you don't can I ask you a question now, please?
...to get new clients. Growing a new business is never easy. She advertised her business on iWing Marketplace.
Can you speak, y'all?
Please, you can speak, pl- please, you can speak. We are live. Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone. We are live.
We are live now.
Yes, please, you we we can keep going.
Okay. Go ahead. Keep going. Ask the question.
Okay, no, I was um I was inviting you so you can um, you know, was at the meeting.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, thank you for uh everyone who take a time, you know, this evening to join the uh this town hall meeting organized by Asera. Uh, the proposal, we organized this a town hall meeting in order to invite our delegates, council member, uh organization in the community who, you know, really uh our community needs from them so they can come uh and pass a message and deliver a message. That's the reason we take a time uh to, you know, to put this together. Uh, we so sorry for all those lack of technology we we going through, but uh uh we promise you, we're going to be get better, uh make sure we have a platform like a Afrikt Today so we can deliver a message to to our community to make sure during this pandemic uh moment who time is hard, who things are going very bad for everyone, who people lose a job uh who people, you know, going through a lot of stuff. But we be able to have a people who love our community, people who work hard every single day to make sure uh we have what we need, we have the information. We people know what they can seeking of foods, uh benefits, you know, in this community. So uh that's the reason we take a time today to put this down our meeting. Uh, we not perfect, but we are trying hard and then we're going to make sure we deliver a message to those who know the message to our community.
So much easier.
Thank you, Coach Fofo, and thank you, everybody, for uh being a part of this town hall uh this evening. I really appreciate you taking the time and coming here to share your insight. Uh, with your host, Mr. Shai Salu. Have a great evening.
Thank you so much.